A copy of the notice is on file with the board secretary. The notices and conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the guidelines for virtual meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Please note, all microphones for public users are muted until the public question or comment period. If you would like to speak during that time only, please use the raise hand button in Zoom if on a computer, or dial *9 if on the telephone. Your name or last digits of your phone number will be called when it is your turn to speak. During the public comment section only, the public will have three minutes to speak. Please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices during the meeting. Please identify yourself before you speak at all times. It's very important for us to do that during these virtual meetings. This meeting is being recorded and will be available to view via Asbury AP TV. Please join me in saluting the flag. We pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Today is Monday, June 1st, and it is 7:04 PM. I will now take roll. Mayor John Moore. Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton. Michael Manzella.
Here.
Jim Henry. Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Trudy Slipex. Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Eric Gallobo.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
And Barbara Kozak.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we have one application today. H4 Holdings 917 Asbury LLC. They're looking for preliminary and final site plan approval and variances and waivers, and/or design exceptions to convert prior auto shop location to house two retail office ground level units and residential two second floor, including two two-bedroom apartments with parking lot. Jack?
Okay. First of all, Michael Manzella, is this being recorded?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see. I've reviewed the notices, they're in proper form, we have jurisdiction to proceed this evening.
Can we help them again?
We have Jim Henry in now?
Yes, Jim Henry is in. Do you want me to take roll again?
No, just acknowledge Jim's presence.
Okay. I'm acknowledging that Jim Henry has joined the meeting.
Yes.
Thank you, Jim.
Can you get me back?
Jim, you can mute and unmute yourself at any time by clicking on the mute button at the lower left corner of your screen. Hi, Pam.
What happened?
I'm muted.
No, you're not muted.
You're not muted.
You're currently unmuted, Jim.
Thank you.
A modification that we made since last meeting, Jim? A modification we made since last meeting, Jim, is that you can unmute, you can mute yourself anytime you like.
Can you get this?
All right, are we ready to begin?
I'm ready.
Your turn.
Madam Chairman, I'm ready to proceed. Just one point of order. We also submitted a disclosure of the LLC membership, which is also a jurisdictional requirement, and I wanted to make sure that that was reviewed.
As part of the application, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that, yeah, I'm sure that was reviewed during.
Madam Chairperson, we are in receipt of your professional notices, professional reports, and the professional reports, the last planner's report was received, I think, three days ago. I may be wrong on that, but that's about right, Friday. And so, we have taken a look at that, and particularly, I'm referring to the sections that deal with the overall design of the project, and I've never had to, never had to seek relief from a missing tooth before, but apparently I have to do that. So, in reviewing that, we are assuming that, like most boards, you pay attention to your professionals, and you've thought this through also. And essentially, what the planner is asking is that we remove, move the building forward to make it line up more on the street, and that we demolish the building, which we were modifying as part of our application. And if I might, I'd have our engineer, who's also a professional planner, speak to that.
There we go. Good evening. My name is Paul Anderson.
Excuse me, Paul, let's, let me, let me jump in here for a second. Let's get the board's professional staff sworn in, in case there's discussion, and then we'll enter in as exhibits, since Keith referred to the planner's report, we'll have that officially marked, I guess, at this point, too. Okay, so if the board staff would please raise your right hands, and repeat, and you solemnly swear that the testimony about the given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Okay, would all of you please state your name for the record and your position with the board?
Picture board engineer.
Is Doug on?
Doug Cleland, board engineer.
All right, and Donna Miller, did you pick up Donna's testimony? It was kind of faint.
Do I need to hear my audio?
Yeah, no, I got your audio, but did, Irina, did you get Donna's, were you able to hear her?
No, Donna, go ahead. You may have been unmuted, I mean muted.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Keith? You want Paul Anderson to testify, or is that who?
Yes, I would. Mr. Anderson?
Okay, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear a testimony about the given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it, please.
Paul W. Anderson, A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, what are your professional, what do you do for a living?
I'm a licensed professional engineer and a licensed professional planner. I operate my firm, Anderson Consulting Services, who does site plans and subdivisions throughout the state, mostly in central and northern New Jersey. I prepared the plans for this application before you this evening. I've been accepted as an expert in both planning and engineering before this board previously, on one of the applicant's last applications next door to this, this site.
And you, did you also review the planner's report, the engineer's report?
I have, yes.
And did you discuss that with the applicant, and whether there might be a change of plans in connection with the application?
Well, yes, and what we would like to do is understand the board's viewpoint on this comment. So here's where we started. We had a relatively simple application, where we're going to have an adaptive reuse of an existing building, existing parking in front of it, and to beautify it, remove the fencing, obviously, it's an auto repair facility, so we're changing use to retail. We're going to add dormers to the second story, so that we can have some residential units above. It's relatively simple expansion of this, a minor expansion of the property, and dressing it up, make it look much better than it was today. In our mind, it was an extremely simple application, it didn't require minor C variances, one being for rear yard and one for side yard. Both were only expansions of existing non-conformities, because we're just going up over the existing building. They were not that significant. Now, when we read the planner's report, it brought up some points about, you know, the goals of the city, and how they would prefer to have a uniformed streetscape, and we understand that. To us, that's a much bigger project, but in thinking about it, you know, the applicant has been redeveloping properties in the city for some time now, and he's, his intention is to do what's best for the city. But in looking at this, what we're hoping to do is, if we could add potentially a little bit more density to this application, and put in, it would, it would compensate for removing the existing building and building a new building that was in keeping with what the goals that the city has. I'm not talking about anything significant either, I'm talking about maybe adding additional 300 square feet to the retail, and one additional apartment upstairs. And looking at it briefly, I think that what it does is it creates, it eliminates the setback variances. It potentially could eliminate the impervious coverage relief that is an existing non-conformity. And, and the only thing, but it would, there would change, is we would go from conforming in parking to probably needing a variance for maybe about two parking spaces. I think if I used 2,000 square foot of retail on the first floor, and two ones and one two-bedroom upstairs, we would require 11, 11.3, I think, maybe, it depends on how close to 2,000, or maybe 12 spaces, and where I think we could get nine. So we're looking at a variance relief of two to three parking spaces. So what we'd like to understand from the board is, how does this weigh out to the board? In your opinion, is it worthwhile to have a building that would be, a new building that's conforming architecturally, and in the right location, that you would prefer with parking in the back, although it needed a, you know, a mile, a minor parking variance? Or would you, you know, or should we continue on the path of what we have submitted to the board already? I mean, I think, you know, to make it affordable, we need to, you know, to add just a tiny bit to it, to make it, to make it a little bit better, so it pays for itself a little bit sooner. But we're open to the concept that was presented in the planner's report, and I think, if you look at it, it's just a little ahead of, it is a residential apartment and retail mix, they have, you know, opposing peak hour traffic and parking demands. So I think, you know, realistically, I think if you look forward to an application like that, you would probably hear some testimony that would justify the parking variances to fairly well for only two spaces. So with that, I'd just like to get your opinions as to whether this is something that would be entertained, or is it out of the question, or where does it fall on the meter?
Well, from after, I'll just give you, go ahead, Donna, if you want to go.
Sorry, so I guess I just wanted to clarify. So you guys are considering amending the application, so that you could have more dwelling units, more retail space, but in a new configuration, that would potentially address many of the urban design considerations that we raised in our report. The trade-off might be, there may be some insufficiency in the number of off-street parking spaces?
Correct. That is correct.
Okay.
So, and it's, it would be just one additional apartment and 300 square feet or so of additional retail.
And so, just offer to the board, that would still be a conforming use, and
Right.
would comply with density, it would still stay within the planning board's jurisdiction.
That's correct. It doesn't create any other variances, it's just the parking. When I say additional density, it's not a density variance as, you know, as you might think. It's, it is just a permitted use, the only thing is that it would create the need for more parking, and, you know, and we wouldn't, we would need a parking variance. Before we would push forward with the modification to this application, we want to know whether that was acceptable, or whether that seems like a reasonable trade-off to get the improved urban design, and, you know, address some of the comments that you have in your report in that scenario.
I have a question. So the ordinance now, for this zone, does not allow for shared parking to meet the parking requirements?
I, you know, I haven't really looked into it yet. It may, I mean, I just got this report last Friday evening, and I've been kind of sketching, seeing what we could actually do. If there is a shared parking thing, that it might actually mitigate some of the relief required.
Right. And I think, as you said, that the testimony would certainly speak to that, even if it isn't something in the code that is, yeah. So, you know, I personally would be in favor of going that route.
Okay.
Right, because, because from what I, from, also from what, I mean, after reading the report, the variances and the design exceptions are numerous. So, though I also can't say that, depending on, I mean, depending on what the new design would be, and what the new application would look like, I am not willing to say right now that, okay, the parking will be fine. You know, we can't say that, if that's what you're looking for, you know? But we need to, we need to see what the new design is, and obviously, the goal is to hit all the ordinances appropriately, and have as few design exceptions and variances as possible, if you need any at all. So, that's just, that's just my two cents.
I guess what we're trying to do is sound out the board to find out, I mean, this, this would be a much bigger investment by our client's part, and it would also mean starting from scratch. I mean, the site doesn't change, but it still means that we'd be redesigning a new building, and so, it would be a considerable amount more expensive. So we didn't want to come here tonight and address each point in the planner's report, and waste your time with all that, with the engineering, if in fact, the way we should be going is as outlined by our engineer planner. But, so that's, that's why we kept, kept the meeting and didn't cancel it. We thought we could get some feedback, and if there's positive feedback, we're certainly going to look into it.
I think, oh, go ahead, Donna, Donna, or Alexis?
I just wanted to respond to Mr. Manzella.
Donna, I'm sorry, one second. Can everyone please make sure to remember to state your name before you speak, because we may have some listeners on telephone? Thank you.
Sorry, sorry. So this is Donna Miller, board planner. I wanted to address Mr. Manzella's question just prior, that, yes, potentially, the applicant could proceed with the shared parking provisions in the design standards part of the ordinance, and, you know, depending on how their proposal works out, they may not actually end up with a deviation in the parking requirement.
Right, and then I guess my point was just that, I think I would be willing to trade maybe a de minimis parking requirement to, or parking variance, in order to get a project that's much more in line with the urban design, you know, standards that we would like to see on Asbury Avenue. So that was just. This is Keith Henderson speaking again, and I appreciate that feedback, because we would be starting from scratch, as I said, and we'd hate to do it, and then find out that that wasn't going to work either. I appreciate the feedback. Of course, I'm only one voice, so.
Oh, I understand.
This is Jen Souter. I echo Mike's feelings on that, that I would prefer to see those urban design aspects brought in, and, you know, see what the project looked like at that point, but I think that that trade-off is a reasonable, especially, yeah, with the changes that, looking forward on Asbury have, make a big difference.
Yeah, so, as Barbara, this is Alexis Taylor, sorry, board member. So, as Barbara said, we can only really evaluate the application in front of us, but I am of the strong opinion that Asbury Avenue is a very important gateway to our city. It's called out again and again in the master plan, as a corridor where the city wants to see improvement and investment. I understand it's a larger initial investment, but I also think in terms of the health of the city, of kind of the urban design aspects, the pedestrian aspects, but also, for retail, you know, visibility is everything. And so even by bringing that building up to the street, I think you're actually creating a better situation, probably for your retail clients as well. I think it's a better decision in terms of where the city is going, and this is a really important, it's in an important area, and it's an important lot, and it will have a lot of visibility, so I would certainly support doing the right type of design here for the city.
Keith Henderson again, I appreciate your insight.
Any other planning board members have something?
Yeah, Jim Henry, but he's muted.
All right, you can unmute yourself, Jim.
Hi, this is Rick Lambert, planning board member. I echo the same sentiments of Jennifer, Mike, and Alexis. I think it's a, it's a good project, and I think it would really contribute to the overall health of Asbury Avenue with the new design. I certainly would consider what your considerations are moving forward.
All right, Jim?
Jim Henry, depending on a couple of factors, would the parking in the back be assigned parking for the residents? If it were, I think maybe you might be able to, depending on your layout, if you made your stalls a little bit narrower, you may be able to pick up an extra parking place. If you, you know, especially if there's not much activity going on between the use of those parking stalls, and maybe by making them a little bit narrower, you might be able to pick up that, an extra spot in, in the rear. Again, depending on what your layout might be, and that might help you out a little bit. But I think the comments made by the board, you know, Asbury Avenue is the gateway, and if, firstly, I'd like to see a very, very high curb appeal building at that location, not one that's set back 100 feet from the property line.
Keith Henderson again, thank you, Mr. Henry, I appreciate your input.
So, this is Barbara Kozak, so I think that you've heard from most of the planning board members, that they are very much interested in taking a new site plan.
And Mr. Harmon, Keith Henderson again, Mr. Harmon is nodding at me, so I'm assuming that that is the direction we will be going in, and we will not be proceeding with tonight's application any further.
Can I, just for the record, because of this whole virtual thing, Jay, please raise your right hand, I need more than a nod. Okay, do you solemnly swear the testimony about the given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and tell us your affiliation with the applicant, and then you can answer Keith's question verbally, please.
James N. Harmon, H-A-R-M-A-N. I am the sole member of H4 Holdings 917 LLC, and I also own the property adjacent to the location. Right, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Keith, you want to re-ask the question, so we get an affirmation on the record verbally?
Jay, the question is, will we be redesigning and resubmitting and withdrawing tonight's application at this time?
That would be my intent, yes.
Okay. I was going to say before, when you said nod, it reminded me of something very old, it says, "A nod is good as a wink to a blind horse."
We also would, I wouldn't mind offering, if you wanted to, we do have the opportunity to, the TRC is very willing to take a look at any application ahead of time. If you'd like to take advantage of that, you're welcome to. If you, if you don't, that's okay also. It's totally up to you.
Technical review committee?
Yeah, the technical review committee, if you would like to.
And the design committee as well.
Design review committee is also available. So you certainly can, you know, bounce it off a number of members ahead of time, if you'd like. Totally your call.
Good. Jay Harmon here. Barbara, who, who's in charge of the TRC?
The TRC, you'd have to go to Cassandra, in the mayor's office.
Yep. And how about design review committee?
Design review, I believe that we go to, what, Michelle? We go to Michelle Alonso?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Donna would like to.
Donna?
Thanks. Donna Miller, so I just, Jack, actually withdraw, or can they just amend the current application? I mean, it's essentially a site.
Yeah, I mean, it's, again, six in one hand, half a dozen in the other. You can amend it, but you've got to readjust, you'll probably have to submit a new application, because it's going to be totally different. I talked to Irene about the fees and all that, and obviously, new notice would have to go out at some point in the future, because it's a whole different application. So, either or, it might be easier to just submit a new one. Withdraw the old one, save your fees, whatever fees you have left over, and apply it to a new one, and just do a new application based on a new site plan.
Keith Henderson again, Jack, I appreciate that. I think we'll just talk to Irene about it, try to figure out which is the most efficient thing, and then we'll do whatever she suggests.
Sure, sure.
So, Jack, the only thing we, we have to decide, though, is if we're going to carry the application tonight.
No. No, there's no reason to carry it, because if you're going back to the drawing board, that's going to take a little bit of time, and then we just get into this constant carrying, 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 and then they got to re-notice anyway.
Okay.
So, it doesn't, you know, there's no reason to just carry it, we just let Jay and his team get together, do the, do what they're going to do for a new project, submit it, and get them, get them rolling. Right.
Right?
Good. So, I guess the prudent thing would be to request a motion to withdraw the application, and that's, I think that's what would be appropriate under the circumstances, and then go back to drawing board and go forward.
All right, so then, so then the planning board has to do a motion to withdraw?
No, it would be the applicant's request.
Applicant?
And the board to grant the withdrawal, yeah.
Yeah, Jack, I can, I can do that tonight, right now, or I can, if you want, I can send a letter, so you got a letter for your file.
Do it on the record, send us a quick confirming letter.
Both.
And liner, and we're good.
And Madam Chairwoman, this would be a simple request to withdraw this application, and we'll resubmit, we'll work out the timing and the fees with your secretary, and, and at this point, we will not be proceeding. And I will confirm that with a letter.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, yeah, do a quick motion, verbal, yeah.
Go get a motion to, to have the application withdrawn, and come back with a new site plan.
Jim Henry?
New application with notice. Anybody second?
Jim Henry's second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Alexis Taylor, second by Jim Henry. Do we take roll, or can we just take it all in favor?
Well, you got, we got to do roll because of the technicalities.
Okay. Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Rick Lambert.
Yes.
And Barbara Kozak.
Yes.
Thank you. Application withdrawn.
Okay, so, that's all that we had on the agenda today. So, do I get a motion to adjourn?
This is Rick Lambert, so moved.
Jim Henry, second.
Okay, I have a motion by Rick Lambert, and a second by Jim Henry. Okay, I have a motion by Rick Lambert, and a second by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your participation and attendance.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone, thank you.
Good night.